Okay, uh, make a motion to call the planning, building, zoning and building committee to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino? Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Here.
It's just Catalano, right?
Yeah, I think Sonny said here, too. Is that Sonny?
Yes, thank you.
Sonny is...
Okay, and...
Okay. Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Zizmarski?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Okay, uh, would that make the motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty?
So move. Alderman Wesley.
Okay, Alderman Wesley, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Uh, report and recommendation, authorize a code amendment to chapter six of the city code to add regulations that address Airbnb type uses within the rental housing program. Ed, are you there to take this one?
Yes, absolutely. This is Ed. Um, just very briefly, um, we have had, um, a couple of complaints in the past about some Airbnb properties, um, in the city of Wooddale, uh, that obviously have some impacts on the neighborhoods. Um, the Pat Bond, the city attorney, looked at, reviewed the ordinance. Uh, the, the rental ordinance does not adequately address Airbnbs as they're relatively new use, uh, in the last, uh, few years. So, uh, Attorney Bond's drafted some language that's in the packet, um, essentially including Airbnb properties in the rental program, so it would require them to register and require a, an inspection as well. Um, and that is it unless, uh, someone has some questions. Thank you.
I ask some question?
I do, too.
Okay, uh, one at a time. Who was the...
Thank the mayor first.
Okay, mayor, you have a...
Yes, uh, thank you, Peter. Uh, Ed, so I was looking at this, I'm trying to go through the redlining. It's, it looks like we're treating this just like a regular rental, somebody who's renting their place for a year or something. Shouldn't this be more stringent because this is more like a weekend kinda deal and things like that? So, we can control it a little better? I, I don't know. I'm just asking.
Mr. Cage?
Yeah, this is Ed again. Thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, it's, you're exactly right, uh, man. This is including it in the rental program, treating it as a regular rental. The problem with Airbnbs, they can be relatively short term, uh, for a weekend. They can be longer term for a couple of weeks, uh, and sometimes they go longer than that. Um, really, the key is to, we don't have any regulations as it stands, so when we've had complaints, uh, and I'm thinking some of the complaints that we've had have been, uh, parking, uh, et cetera, you know, uh, extra number of cars. Um, but this gives us the ability to go into the property, do the inspection, which we would do with any other rental, uh, and just make sure that the life safety issues are addressed. And then also, uh, it gives us a record of the ownership. Um, if there are any complaints, then we have a person to contact, uh, and to hold that person responsible if there are any violations.
Can I have a follow-up?
Yep, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, Ed, but I understand, I, I got all that, but, I mean, this is, they're treating this more like a hotel, right? Like a little resort kinda deal. There's, it's not like they're paying taxes and all this other stuff. Shouldn't, shouldn't it be a little more stringent in this type of use? Even if it's a month, I mean, and I, again, I guess there could be month-to-month rentals. Um, but this is a, I don't know, I think it's just, we should have a little more tools in our toolbox. I don't know, that's just me.
Mr. Cage?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, th- this is what the city attorney recommended, because we didn't have any regulations. I think you bring up a valid point. I think that's something the manager and I can, uh, mention to the city attorney to get his opinion on. Um, but right now, we have no regulations, so this is a step in the right direction. But you're right, I mean, if it's, if we see cases where these are turning over on a regular basis, maybe we do need to get into them more regularly than, you know, once a year. Good point.
Okay, um, okay, Alderman E. Wesley, you have some question?
Yeah, I do, if you don't mind. I got two. So, I agree with the mayor on that. Uh, it ain't tight, it's not secure enough. So, right now, our rental property, we go in and inspect it once. At the, we don't do them every year, which we were told that they don't do them every year. Second of all, if they gotta, they don't have any violations, we kinda like skip them the following year. I, I don't, I, I don't buy that. I, I, we need more teeth into this. We really do.
Mr. Cage?
Alderman Woods, could I be recognized?
Uh, yeah, Alderman Woods, go ahead. You, it sounds like you might have an answer to this, or...
I don't have an a- answer, but I, 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 I think I wanna take us back to, to square one and find out what we're trying to solve for. So, was the issue, 'cause I don't have any personal experience with what this caused or didn't cause, but if we're trying to solve a specific problem, my question is, does this actually solve that? Or is there something different we should do in a different code? So, was the issue just that people were rowdy, there were too many cars parked there? And, and wouldn't that be solved by writing them tickets or citing them? As opposed to trying to create some new quasi leasing program for Airbnb? I guess that's, I don't, I don't know if Ed can answer that or is prepared to answer that. Uh, but, you know, what, what are the actual problems that were caused by the, the Airbnb program that we're trying to solve?
May I answer that?
Yes, Alderman Wesley.
So, Mr. Woods, I have two of them in my area right now that they do it. They are, uh, there are so many cars coming and going off the property. Uh, I had, had complaints that there's been issues with them. I have one that they gutted the whole house and they did it without a permit, okay? And, and, and that ain't taken care of. It, it's just, and I understand that guys trying to make, but they don't even pay, they don't pay the sales tax. When they rent it, they don't get tax on it. So, whatever money they get, they're taxed on. Far, I'm concerned, this is like a hotel, okay? They should be taxed on it. If you rent a house somewhere else, there's sales tax or some tax on it. These people are not. All they're gonna do is get an inspection on it? I, I, I just don't see that. They should be charged more money than the owner of this house should be able to give the city back money because they're renting it. It's like a hotel, far I'm concerned.
Randy Messina, may he speak? Alderman Messina?
Yes, Alderman Messina.
Um, so, there, there is no tax that's paid when you're the owner of an Airbnb? Or, or, or the likes? But I do think that we definitely, this is a major life safety issue. And as much as it pains me to do it in my own Airbnb, there is a inspection that happens twice a year and there are more stringent health, or rather, risk, you know, things that we need to meet. So, we have to have certain number of CO2 monitors, smoke alarms, things that I probably would never have in my own personal home. But I also think the idea of, of having people pay a fee to register is also a good idea 'cause there is a cost to do that. Um, so, I wouldn't be opposed, maybe not a tax, but I think there should be a fee, uh, for those that are going to do Airbnb.
Can I say something?
Um, yeah, I was just, uh, gonna, can I circle back to some of the comments? Obviously, we had a, a few complaints. It's not a ton of complaints, but we don't really have an ordinance on these, so that's why the proposed language was, uh, put on the agenda in front of you guys. The, the other thing is that, um, we started out essentially just by adding it to the rental program, just as Alderman Messina mentioned. If it's registered, obviously, they pay a fee, gives us the ability and the right to inspect the property. Um, it sounds like some of the elected officials are interested in maybe tightening that up. And I think, you know, maybe the way to go with Airbnbs is, as Alderman Wesley said, if we have a passing rental, uh, inspection, then they skip the next year, just in terms of timing. Maybe, maybe we do this every year, um, just to make sure that we're covered. Or, you know, that's something we can talk to Pat Bond, if he's got some experience with other communities that have done this as well.
Can I say something?
Uh, I'll say I have a couple of comments first, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
Uh, so first of all, I, I, I mean, we right now have a, a firm, they're looking at all of our, uh, codes and, and also in a law firm that's reviewing all of our codes. Did they look at this, or Ed, have we reached out to them to, about this, what their thoughts were?
Uh, excellent point, Chairman. This, um, the rental program is, it's not in the Udo. So, the Udo is, I think, chapter seventeen, which covers a huge variety of issues. Um, interestingly enough, it does not, rental programs in chapter six, which is a separate section. So, this is not something that they would be reviewing.
Okay.
But, yeah, this is something that we could, uh, you know, ask for their opinion on, certainly.
Um, okay, uh, I mean, it might, it might make sense to ask, I mean, maybe, did they have, you know, other people with Airbnbs? And that was kinda my next question, is how could you really prove it's an Airbnb? I, I mean, yeah, I could see, you know, when you have a home in, say, Lake, by Lake Michigan somewhere and it's, you know, vacant ninety percent of the time, or seventy percent of the time, and every once in a while, you have people there. But, like Alderman E. Wesley, I mean, is, is the, how, I mean, how could we really tell that it's being used as an Airbnb?
Be, can I cut in?
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
How you, because you went on a website and you keyed up that address and it showed he's advertising it. It's got that information. So, they advertise on, online, ask Randy how he does his R and B.
Yeah, it can, you, you, it's, it's manual, there's no automatic way to do it, but yeah, you can, you can find it.
Okay, so I guess that was my main question, is how could you really prove it? But, yeah, if it's on a website, it's an Airbnb website, that's, okay, makes sense.
Alderman Jacob, uh, city manager, uh, has a comment?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, uh, city manager, if you promise.
Uh, yeah, as, uh, Director Cage had noted, we were kinda going from nothing, uh, to something as the strategy. And part of the reason we're discussing this tonight is kinda to see where you wanna go. Um, just kinda hearing everybody, what are the possible scenarios we could do? Um, since it is a little bit more intensive than just a regular rental unit, seems to be in need for more inspections. We could just make it as simple as, like Alderman Messina said, two inspections per year mandated and double the regular, uh, rental registration fee on a normal property. So, it's essentially, uh, double, um, both the inspection and the fee costs.
Can I say something?
Yeah, yeah, ma- yeah, Mayor, go ahead. I know you had, that's the other question.
And, and basically, honestly, I agree with making them, just putting them in the rental. They, they are rentals, and that's what, that's what I was asking for. Can we make this a little more stringent than a regular rental? That, that's it. So, if, if it's a double the fee and two inspections a year, because we could, this could be a, a monthly thing, it could be a weekend thing, uh, I don't know. I mean, I've, I've heard horror stories where they're just in the middle of neighborhoods in Chicago, they broke something up 'cause somebody died, they were having a party there for the weekend or something. And this wasn't on a, you know, by the beach or something like that, it was just in some neighborhood. Uh, that's all. I'm just trying to protect against that stuff and if, you know, again, they can pay the fee and still have the party, I get it. So, but, uh, it's a little more controlled.
Yeah, uh... Mayor, are you done?
Yeah, yeah, I, that's all. I mean, I agree, it should go into the, there should be like a rental and, but I was just hoping for a little more stringent than the normal rental, that's all.
Okay, Alderman Messina?
Yeah, um, Ed, is, is there language, or could we get language in the, in there that says that if they fail to meet the code, um, the inspection, rather, that they are not, uh, able to rent until then, or is that an automatic?
That's an automatic. Yeah, this is, this is Ed, that's, yeah, so typically with the, with the normal rental, uh, property program, the condition of getting the certificate, um, essentially is an approved, passed inspection. You have a, you have a timeframe when you have to have the inspection. Uh, it's done on a zone system, like, like the COCs. You get an inspection, sometimes they pass first time, sometimes they don't. You have a timeframe where you have to resolve the issues. If you don't, uh, those are the cases, you know, I think in some cases, we give them thirty days. Either address them, or then they go to adjudication and they get fined.
Can I, uh, Alderman, Alderman Messina?
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead, Alderman.
So, I guess, I guess my point was, now that we have one great, what I've seen at other places in townships is it's shorter than the normal rental, meaning, and I don't know if this is a due process thing, but it might be different, I don't know. But instead of being thirty days to meet, it's fifteen days to meet because the turnover, the, the turnover in rentals is so much faster than a normal rental. Is that something we can explore?
Um, yeah, this is, thanks, Chairman. Um, yeah, this is Ed again. Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, normally with the rental program, they typically get thirty days because they're bigger issues that they need to resolve. Um, typically with a code enforcement issue, we give people a week. Uh, I think that's a, that's a reasonable timeframe. The only thing I, I would just, you know, note is that it's probably best just to, um, check with Pat Bond. Obviously, we'll check with Tesco, uh, sorry, Tesca, to see what other communities are doing. We just wanna be consistent so we're not doing something untoward. But I think that, that timeframe is very reasonable.
Alderman Jacob, uh, city manager here again, can I, Chairman?
Yep, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, also to address Alderman E. Wesley's concern, uh, one of the ideas I had, uh, was potentially that after their license, uh, we have it in the code, some protections for us, um, that says perhaps, um, you know, if you have five, uh, you know, police, like noise violations or complaints that are, are verified with the Wooddale Police Department, that we would then be able to, um, you know, de-license, um, you as a registered rental. That way, that would kinda put the onus on the individual Airbnb person to take their, uh, renting of the unit more seriously and less, uh, headaches for the neighbors, um, in any given area. Just an idea.
Good idea. Is this Tony Catalano?
Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, so, do we know how many of these we have in our, our, um, community? Ed?
Uh, yeah, this is Ed. So, um, the, the ones that I've seen advertised, I would say in the region of two or three. So, we're not talking a huge amount, but this is something that might expand as time goes on.
Okay.
So, I think, I think kind of getting a flavor of what other communities do. And, um, you know, there's, there's some, really some good concerns and some good discussion here this evening. I think I'm gonna take them back with, uh, Manager Murmus. Talk to, uh, Pat Bond to make sure we're, we're all good on the legal standfront, uh, standpoint. Um, and then just check in with Tesca to see if they have some other communities, and I'm sure they do, that regulate this, so we can check what they have, but all good.
Okay, thank you. One more question, and can, can we zone them out and have them at all in our community? Do we have the power to do that?
No. Uh, this is Ed again. I'd probably lean towards not doing that. Then you get into the exclusionary and then someone will challenge it. Um, I wanna double check with Pat, Pat Bond, just to make sure that we're doing things the right way. Um, I think we're gonna have them either way. I don't think we're gonna have, you know, a huge amount of these properties. Um, but I think we've, we have enough of them that they can create issues. And at, at the end of the day, what I tell most people in terms of code enforcement is, you know, the code is there to make sure that people are good neighbors. Sometimes people don't follow the rules, that's why we enforce the code. Uh, Airbnb is a slightly different animal because it's people coming and going a lot quicker. Therefore, I think the registration fee increase to cover an extra inspection. Uh, so to do maybe two inspections per year is a good way of solving that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Cage, this is Alderman Jacob. Um, the, uh, the question I would have would be, it, this doesn't seem like a real long chapter, does it? I mean, I'm looking, there's maybe twenty pages in this chapter? Or is this a lot longer than what I'm seeing here?
No, you, you're, you're correct. The, uh, the rental section is in the region of fifteen to twenty pages. It's, it's not a long chapter.
I, I would imagine if we gave this to Tesca and that law firm to just review and just let them know the problem we're having, I mean, th- they both seem to be the kind of experts in codes. I, I mean, it, you know, to me, it would make sense. You know, I can't see it costing maybe, you know, five hundred dollars for them to look at this. I, you know, I can't see it being, I mean, what, what are, what are they charging us for looking at the whole Udo? Aren't they charging...
Yeah, I mean, I, um...
You know what the fee is for that?
Um, yeah, yeah, the, that's a, obviously a much larger section. I, I know they'd be happy to look at it. I, I don't think we're talking about a huge fee. That's certainly something I can talk to the city manager Murmus about and, um, we can get that number back to you. I, I don't think we're looking at a, a large number, for sure.
I think we should...
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
I think we should move forward and get a motion on the table so we can at least get something in the books for this Airbnb. And we can always look at this stuff and tweak it, but something needs to be on the books.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we couldn't be waiting in the...
I, I'd make a motion to approve, to authorize a code amendment to chapter six of the city code to add regulations that address Airbnb and, uh, within the rental housing program with review of the city attorney and, uh, Tesca and the attorney that, uh, is reviewing our Udo.
Second.
Alderman Woods, can I comment? Okay, never mind.
Okay, uh, Alderman Woods, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I was gonna make a correction to your motion, but, uh, 'cause I think, I think what we were saying is just pass what we got and then we'll go to step two through Tesca as opposed to making it all inclusive. But that being said, going back to my original question or concern, and that's solving the issue, I think Mr. Cage touched on some of the things that, that, uh, some of the things then violate different sections of the code and you get, get into that, whether it's parking noise, number of things, so this is a broader issue. And then to bring in a little more complexity, when you, when you're talking about this, how do we determine who's a Airbnb? Uh, in the building market, we have properties that we rent out. Sometimes we rent them for a couple of weeks for somebody to make a closing, sometimes three months, six months, could be two months. Uh, it happens all the time. I'm not the only one that, that does it. So, that would then kinda get incorporated into this ordinance, too. I don't figure that people that I rent a house to are causing problems. I, I get what you're saying, but when you're dishing out all these other ordinances and, uh, expanding on punishments, I think we just really need to be careful who we're punishing, you know? And the fact that we inspect the property twice doesn't mean bad actors don't rent the property unbeknownst to the owner. So, maybe we look into, uh, if that person... Ed, can you add, answer this? In the rentals, do they have to show you a lease? Do, does the city collect a copy of their lease? I know in other communities, they do.
Uh, this is, this is Ed.
Mr. Cage?
Uh, yes, you're, you're exactly correct, Alderman Woods. Uh, part of the, the lease is part of the registration process.
So, maybe that's something. So, if they, if this is gonna actually be a, uh, an Airbnb where it's, as Ms. Alderman Messina said, you know, it's, uh, a week, a weekend, two weeks, you know, the, the shorter stays, that, uh, whatever that information, somebody's gotta book that, right? And that information then maybe should be sent to the city so we know who's in the house so we can fairly go after, you know, the people that are actually, uh, renting the property, too. So, I just want us to take a broader look. I'm okay with passing what we got on the, on the table right now and then taking a broader look at it so that we get it right. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
Yeah, I, I have one other, other question.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, with, so with the motion that is made today, we are going to adopt this without our discussion on, on those changes that we brought up? Or, or are we going to revisit this at the next committee, or what? Because this needs to be addressed quick this year. I, I'm not, I'm not going to go... I'm not going to go through the summer with it again.
Yeah, I, I guess my, the way I saw it is, I mean, we gave this to the attorney in Tesca to review. I mean, it wouldn't take more than a week or two. It wouldn't take forever to review this.
Well, Tesca's not even...
What's that, Mayor?
Tesca's not an attorney, and so Glink, who works with Tesca...
Well, yeah, but they're working together, they're both working together. We're paying them one fee together, aren't we not?
Yeah, they're...
So, Ansel Glink is the attorney working with, with Tesca, I mean, we hired them.
But my question, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
I was gonna inter, interject, though. It, it, so if we pass this and then direct staff to, to do some future exploration with Ansel Glink and Tesca so that we have something on the books today, or reasonably in a couple of weeks when we pass it, right? So, at least we have something. And then if it takes us one month, two months, or three months, we don't know what, uh, Ansel Glink and, and Tesca's schedule is, especially with the COVID thing, what they're doing, how long it's gonna take. So, to Alderman Eugene Wesley's concerns, at least getting the, the, the red markup of this voted on and in the books, we have something not ideal, and then we can take a little more time to expand on the things that were brought up by, uh, the other Alderman.
Uh, well, I would, I would amend my motion to that. I wouldn't have a problem. I think Alderman Catalano, weren't you the second?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, um...
I just wanna make sure, we're sure we're clear. So, the motion is to...
Pass this?
To, to inspection, doubling the fee, what?
No. I, I, I think we pass it just as it's written.
As it's written, okay.
And then we look into, does it make sense to double the fee? Does it make sense to inspect it quarterly, bi- bi-yearly? You know, there's a lot of pieces, uh, to look at, I think, because it encompasses more rental markets than just the Airbnb when you start putting that verbiage in there and could adversely impact other people, or at least create the argument of how come you're picking on me and you don't pick on this guy?
Alderman Messina would like to be recognized.
Yeah, Alderman Messina?
I, I, Pat's a smart guy, and I know he's done this for a very long time. And he, there's no doubt in my mind, there's a reason why. It's as vague as it is. Um, I just think we're gonna end up circling back here with the same recommendation. Um, so, I don't know, I'd be in favor, at least making sure that there is verbiage in there of, of at least two inspections a year and double the fines at minimum. Um, i- i- as far as tweaks or amendments to be proposed.
That's why I was asking, what's, what's the exact motion, so we know we're voting in?
The, the only, if I can interject, though, the only problem is that...
Yes, go ahead.
By, by creating two different classifications now, you, you're, you're creating further issues. The way it's written now, the way it's at, uh, Alderman Messina's point, I think Pat is a, a, a sharp attorney and that he wrote it, uh, loosely to avoid some of the things that we might get into when we start, uh, creating two different classifications. 'Cause you're gonna charge differently for one than the other. And so, that's what starts to open up the other, you know, uh, issues. And that's why I say, let's pass what we have, take another look at the other thing. Whether we get that back in, in thirty days, sixty days, or ninety days, at least we have something, uh, to use, some tools, minimal as they may be, to, to move forward, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, and that, that would be the way I have the motion, is pass it as is and then, um, and then have, have, uh, have it reviewed and then we'll look at it again. And include things such as Alderman Messina's talking about and...
Well, that'll come up.
Alderman, yeah.
This is...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that...
We can talk about that stuff afterwards.
Okay. So, do you want me to repeat the motion?
You, you have a motion and a second, as, as recommended. You, you have a motion and a second, as, as recommended. You need a roll call.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
It's written in the, in the, in the recommendation, basically.
Yeah. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sarantino?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Um, next, items to be considered at future meetings, facade program grant application, spring. Uh, do we have anything else to add? Okay, with that being said, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we are adjourned.
This is Alderman Catalano, uh, Public Works Committee, like to, uh, court order, uh, please take note that the same council members, uh, present. Uh, so I need approval of the minutes of March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, Public Works Committee meeting. That is my motion. Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none.
Um, I, Alderman Catalano, I have, I have one. If, there's a spot in here where it talks about, um, the, uh, uh, let's see. Oh, yeah, you know what? Forget it. Go ahead.
Okay. And if there are none, I'll make a motion to approve. Next is, uh. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did anybody say?
I did. Gene did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, next is report recommendation of holiday, uh, decorations for the clock tower area. Uh, Director Lang, you wanna touch on that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, with all of the craziness going on in the world out there, we thought it'd be a good idea to bring some levity, uh, to our current situation and maybe even some holiday spirit. So tonight, we are seeking some direction from the committee on purchasing some holiday decorations for the clock tower area. So previously, we had to discuss some options for this area, including, um, possibly getting out the decorations. Somebody just broke some dishes, I think. Uh, but I think that was, that option was a little bit too expensive for our taste, so the council gave some direction to perhaps look at purchasing some items and setting up ourselves. So if you look at the attachment, uh, to the memo, you'll see a number of items. Um, within our budget, we actually have seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars left from the current fiscal year's budget, which will refresh with another twenty-five thousand dollars with the upcoming fiscal year's budget. So we actually have plenty of funds to purchase all of these items if we wanted to. So you'll see in the attachment, the items, um, the first four are for various locations around the clock tower. Items five and six are slightly larger items, which will be placed in the center of the clock tower and are meant as more of an attraction for people to come and take pictures with. And then, uh, you'll see at the end of the document, kind of a, a diagram of what it might look like with some of these items out there. So with that, I'll open it up to discussion. What we're looking for is, um, your guys' thoughts on these, if you like them, if you don't like them, if you wanna give us some direction to look for something else. So we'll, we'll take any questions you guys have.
I, okay. My question, yeah, uh, first, I wanna say something on, on item number five, whi- which is that, um, that one that you sit on, the, uh, the ones that you take pictures, I don't know if you guys can see that. It says a possible location three, which I don't like that because, you know, God forbid, if you look at that location, that's like, you, if you have cars going, uh, going west, as I say, going, uh, uh, probably south and turning to go west, and there's gonna be a lot of people gathering around that location, I think it'll be dangerous. So I wouldn't wanna put anything in location three. I wanna keep that away from the street as much as possible. Uh, it's my opinion on it.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so.
Go ahead.
That, thank you. Uh, so that was one of my concerns. So when I was looking to this, we, we've got two issues. A, the things that we purchase, which ones we like, which ones we purchase, and two, where do we put them? I don't think it's imperative that we solve where we put them this evening. Uh, I agree with some of your comments. I think there may be a better place for it.
Right.
Uh, I think the bigger thing is, do we need to purchase them? And I think prior to this, everybody agreed that this was the better idea. I certainly like item five. I like item six. Those are ones that people would definitely be taking pictures at. Uh, I'm open to any of the other ones and or all of them, as, uh, Director Lang had, had mentioned. So, uh, I, I wouldn't get caught up on where they go, because I think there's plenty of other locations, whether that's City Hall, the Veterans Memorial, along the plant. There's other places we could put some of these.
Okay.
I've got a. I have a question.
Oh, who's that? Alderman who?
Eugene.
Eugene Nunzio.
Go, go ahead, Eugene. Alderman, uh, Wesley.
I'll let the mayor go first.
No, go ahead, Gene. You were first anyway. Go ahead.
I, my question is, Mr. Lang, when you said you got seventeen thousand dollars left over from last year's budget, let me tell you one thing. The way I understand, all budgets go down to zero after budgets are closed. So there isn't seventeen thousand. The other question I have a follow-up is, with the circumstances that we are in right now with, with this virus and all that, I would not purchase any of this right now until we see where we have to go back and cut some money somewhere in the budget somehow to, you know, these people are, when the people see these up there, they go, is it, well, the city didn't do anything for us, but we're buying all these Christmas decorations. And I understand it comes out tourism fund. I totally understand that. But it would be a bad blow for us right now.
This is Director Lang. Just to address the, the first part of your, your statement there, uh, yes, the, the budget ends April thirtieth. So after that point, yes, it would have to be, uh, we would have to find some other funds to purchase these. The seventeen thousand is available until that date for this purchase.
All right.
Mayor, you have a question?
Yeah, uh, I was only gonna make a comment similar to yours, Tony, and I understand what Art is already saying. Anytime we're putting something up, I mean, we got the snowplows going, the county and the state's plows down Wooddale Road, down Irving. Naturally, they look a little close to be, I mean, at least the one at City Hall is far enough back where the snowplow doesn't hit that snowflake. Um, but I'm in agreement. I like, you know, number six is a nice one, number five, and then the one that says Happy Holidays, I wouldn't buy them all at once.
Right.
I, 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 I don't wanna spend, you know, all forty, what, forty-two thousand? So if we buy just two of them or three of them, you know, like the presents and the Happy Holidays and whatever, wherever we put them, we put them, you know? Just because I'm also, with everything going on, let's face it, uh, we got, uh, we got something coming up for the residents, uh, in the next committee. So, I mean, we're gonna be doing something for there. And, and of course, we wanna, we wanna make sure the lights are right. The, you know, honestly, when, uh, they put up the lights last year on the two corners, then afterwards, they added an extra string of lights on those, on both corners and, you know, with the, the red, the white, and the blues and the greens. It made a big difference. They, they looked a little weak, and then you guys added some extra lights. And again, even at the treatment plant, the trees on the far west end of the treatment plant, nothing was lit up. I mean, and, and still on some of the trees, we don't go all the way up, you know? I mean, come on, let's just add an extra string of lights. That'll make the difference. And, and as far as these big items, if we buy one or two a year, I think we'll be okay. We don't have to spend a whole lot in one year.
Okay, so.
Alderman Messina?
Go ahead, go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman. Um, this question is for Jeff. Jeff, two years ago, Alderman Jacob and I came back from IML, gave you a, and it's the former director of company that was offering the service, uh, that would do a lot of this for us, right? Um, historically, we're, we haven't been the best at, uh, coordinating our color schemes. And so we brought this company that was gonna do this service at no cost. What exactly happened with that?
Uh, yes, uh, Senator, that was actually the proposal, one of the proposals that we brought forward that the council did not want to proceed with because, um, they felt the cost was too high and it was better to do this in-house ourselves and buy the equipment instead of leasing it and have somebody set it up for free.
Alderman, um, or excuse me, Alderman Messina would like to be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe it was a meeting I missed, but was that at that time or recently?
Uh, I think it was at CIP time.
Even a couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of. A lot of time, a lot of time.
I think we were discussing a couple of years ago where it was brought up about, it was about, it wasn't as much as it was this time, but I think there was around thirty-five to forty-five thousand, even at that time. If I remember, this was a couple of years ago, right, Randy?
Were Alderman Messina would like to be recognized?
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, it was. And but, but it was much more comprehensive than just a couple, you know, presents and a ornament. I mean, it was a complete setup and it included the pavilion, I believe, at the time as well, uh, unless Alderman Jacob remembers otherwise. It was, it was a pretty extensive layout.
Yeah, yeah, Alderman, uh, uh, Alderman Catalano, if I could be recognized, Chairman? This is Alderman Jacob. Um, so, yeah, I would, we, I, I am pretty sure, uh, that this was talked about, cause I, I, it was at budget time, cause I had said that Alderman Messina and I had, uh, brought that stuff forward. And then at the budget time, um, basically was shot down and we decided that we were, for right now, gonna just do a couple of big ornaments this year, and we should always look at that again. Um, which, which I'm, which I'm fine with, but I, I definitely, but the whole thing for Alderman Messina and I were to decorate the clock tower, that corner by the clock tower. So, you know, I'd, I'd be in favor of buying two or three, and again, not every decoration there, and spruce that corner up a little bit.
Okay, so, um, you done, Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, yes, yes, that's it.
So this is Alderman Catalano. Again, what I'm looking at is item one, two, and five. That's probably around eleven thousand dollars. If you guys wanna check that out. And then the rest, um, you know, keep it at this budget, spend the seventeen for this year, um, and spruce up like Alderman Jacob said and everybody else, you know, spruce up the clock tower with more lights. That, that is my motion, if, uh, everybody agrees.
Hold on, hold on, before you make a motion. Wait a minute, let's see. On this, so you're talking about the snowman? This is Nunzio, by the way.
Yes.
So the snowman has the waving arm, and it's not like, uh, you know, it's just, it, it's basically one-sided, flat. It's got the waving arm. I, I get a little nervous with moving pieces.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to choose a snowman, but if you got another one, that's fine.
Well, that's why, that's why I said the Happy Holidays two and.
Yeah. Two, maybe, maybe two, three, and five?
Two, five, and six, or two and five, two and six.
Okay.
I would say two, three, and five. What about two, three, and five?
Alderman Catalano, could I be recognized? Alderman Woods?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, as, as we're going through that, uh, I think originally what, uh, the ones that, uh, Mayor picked, um, not to say that, uh, his ideas are the, the best, but I think in this particular case, I, I agree, and that was number one, number five, and number six, which keeps us under budget. But the reason I'm picking those is those, the bigger ones, the three-dimensional ones, people tend to be a little more excited about and take pictures at, as opposed to the other ones are a, uh, single-dimensional, flat, or a single plane. Uh, I think these look better, have greater impact, and will still keep us under budget. So doing the, the Happy Holidays one, which is number one, I believe, and five and six.
Number two.
Two. Two, five, and six is the numbers, yeah.
Right.
Is it?
Two, five, and six.
Yeah, you're, you're right, two, five, and six. That's correct.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'll make that, I'll make that as a motion then.
And I'll second that. Uh, and, and so that's giving you direction, Director Lang. Um, so we're gonna spend the seventeen thousand, six fifty-two for this year. Um, like, uh, Alderman, uh, Wesley says, you know, with the, considering what's going on right now, uh, but, um, and then the rest, maybe we can spruce up and buy more lights.
Alderman Catalano, can I be recognized?
Yes.
Um, if I did the quick math, I wasn't the math major, but, uh, we're at about thirteen thousand.
Correct.
Eleven, four, sixty-three.
Yeah.
Eleven thousand and some what change?
Four hundred and sixty-three thousand.
No question.
Alderman Catala.
Alderman, sorry, Alderman Catalano, could I make a, a recommendation?
Yes, go ahead.
By no means am I a designer. Uh, Art is probably mo- more towards that, but I've always said, the biggest thing I always noticed when I moved here is nothing was uniform. Everything was mismatching. Everything was just a hot mess. We've done so much work to standardize and, and clean up everything that the idea of, I just a thought, but the idea of item six, which is the gift, I feel like having more than one in an area, may, maybe that's two, one on each side, east and west of Wooddale Road, or one on, you know, east and west of each side of the clock tower, might give some uniformity. Um, and then maybe reposition five, which is that ornament, to where we do the tree lighting, um, because we're gonna have, hopefully, a very good turnout and, and it's gonna be kinda hard for people to take a picture unless they park at shorties, uh, and run out. So I just didn't know if people were open to amending, um, adding one more of the present and moving item five to where the tree lighting would be.
And that's still gonna be, go ahead.
Or are you talking one, five, and two sixes? Is that what you're talking about?
You guys, what you said was right. So the Happy Holidays would be number two, one of those. One of five, which is the seat, that would, that would be at City Hall where the tree lighting is, uh, whether that be ideally in the front or in the back of City Hall. Cause that one's gonna get, you know, wherever we have a lot of people coming in, a lot of foot traffic, I think that would be a good backdrop, I guess. Maybe it's on the side Grove Street there, like right by the trees. And then two of six, where ideally, two presents, whether that be on east or in west of Wooddale Road, over by, you know, where the black wrought iron fence is, where we did the landscaping on east and west of Wooddale Road, or on each side of the clock tower. But at least people are not jumping out of the car on Irving Park trying to take a picture. Uh, and we have some uniformity. Not just one present, but two, and we're still under bud, well, just under budget. Alderman Woods, could I be recognized?
Yes. Go ahead.
So, great point. I didn't bring it up, cause I didn't think anybody wanted to spend the money, but you're absolutely right about the numbers and the grouping. So, uh, kudos. I'll amend my motion to purchasing two number sixes, one number five, and one number two. And that comes out to, uh, actually fifteen thousand, nine hundred, fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents. So still under the seventeen thousand.
Alderman Messina, second.
Tony was the second. Tony was the second.
Well, it was a. I'll, I'll amend my mo-, I'll, I, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, approve the second too, yeah. That's fine.
Alderman, uh, Alderman Catalano, city manager here?
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh, if, if, uh, under the new motion, uh, I believe there'd be about two thousand dollars left if, uh, we wanna get a Grinch, uh, light. I recommended, uh, Director Lang get a Grinch, uh, ornament, but he did not put it in the, uh, in the materials. One last chance, though.
It's not nice.
Yeah, is that for your office, Mr. Murmus?
We, we can put it outside my window.
We, we can put it outside my window.
Okay, perfect.
I was thinking of the dog, anyway, yes, so the extra that we have, we can always have enough to buy lights. Hopefully, we, um, um, we can use that for the lights. So, we have, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, any, any other questions? If there's no other questions, we can have a roll call on that.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Eugene?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Next is, uh, items to consider, future meetings, uh, we have Elizabeth Drive Bridge, it's April twenty-third. We have, uh, groundwater ordinance, uh, that's April twenty-third, and then, uh, George Street, a task, uh, intergovernmental agreement that's coming up in spring, so, uh, any other, any other items considered for future meetings? If there are none, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn. So move. All in first. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee to order, let the Minutetaker reflect that the same members are present. Uh, first, can I get a motion to approve the March twelfth-
So move.
-Financing?
Second.
Any questions, corrections? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes, next, report and recommendations, sewer only users, senior discount, uh, who's gon, who's gonna take that? Is Brad around, does anybody?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
There he is.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, yes, so, as you all know, uh, in November, uh, the council voted to raise the water sewer rates, and there was two dollars per thousand on the variable rate for sewer, seven on the fixed, and then two on the water side. Um, so what's come out of that is the sewer only accounts, uh, that involved in a nineteen dollar increase for them, just flat, because it's a formula based upon, uh, double occupancy and each person using six thousand gallons of water, so they took that seven dollar fixed cost and then a twelve dollars per thousand cost, um, to get to that straight nineteen dollar increase on the sewer only. Uh, what's come out was that some of the, uh, seniors that are on the senior discount program, um, basically, I don't wanna say complain, but because it's a formula, they don't have any way to, you know, effectively, uh, lower their bill or monitor their usage, where the people that are on city water could use less water, do some other things to mitigate those increases. Uh, so what we've kinda come up with is for the sewer only, uh, residents that also qualify for the senior discount to kinda mirror what the water discount is, which is the first twenty-five hundred gallons at no charge, uh, so kinda mirror that on the sewer onlys and basically only charge them for thirty-five hundred gallons of water, so effectively, again, or for sewer, excuse me, so waiving twenty, the cost of twenty-five hundred gallons of sewer, again, to mirror that water thing, so, um, there's currently, uh, about eight accounts that are on sewer only and qualified for the senior discount. There's a little over a hundred accounts that are sewer only, so, um, we're not talking a huge number, and that number of sewer onlys going down, um, pretty consistently, uh, each year by five to ten with the sewer, with the tap-on program that the council's been funding. Um, so, you know, it's, it's an expectation within, let's say, a few years, probably five to ten years, that we know sewer only account and it won't really be an issue anymore, and in the short term, those residents that are on the senior discounts, um, kinda, they, they took the full brunt of the increase with no way to, to combat it, so we're looking at, at something like this to help them kinda mitigate, uh, that increase a little bit, again, for those that qualify for the lower one senior program.
Uh, do, uh-
Alderman, uh, Chairman, can I make, can I, be recognized, Tony Catalano?
Uh, sure, Alderman Catalano, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? I'll, I'll second it, so we have a motion, we have a second, uh, Alderman Eugene Wesley, I believe you had a question?
Yes, I do, so, the people that are on sewer now, is it because we don't have a connection for them to connect on to the water? Or, 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 or what's the deal there? I mean, do we not have water supplying?
Well.
Director Wilson or, uh, Director Lang, do you wanna answer that question?
I can take that, this is, uh, Mr. Wilson, yeah, um, as I believe Alderman Sizmarzki said, yeah, they're on wells, uh, and it's really to the point that, you know, if their well fails, they can't dig a new one, they would have to connect at that point, but their wells haven't failed and they, some combination of hasn't wanted to, can't, don't, um, wanna spend the money or have the money to tap on to city water, um, at this time, and so they're just continuing with their well and then the city sewer.
Well, I, I know they, I, I know the people do have wells, I, I know the people do have wells, my question is, is, to get them, and we've been trying to get these people off wells, is there a way we could get these people off wells a, as, as a payment plan to have them connect? I mean, I, I doubt we were trying to get these people off wells.
Uh, City Manager would like to comment?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Murmice, go ahead.
Yeah, sure, uh, actually, awesome, uh, timing, actually, today, uh, in my inbox at City Hall, I actually had a, uh, connection rebate, uh, form from a resident, so we do have that program still sitting out there, and coincidentally, I did just sign one today for the, um, partnership program to bring but, somebody on to city services. The council stance has always been that they did not want to force, uh, someone on that had a current functioning well, um, but they, they wouldn't allow new wells, I believe, was the stance, but we do have an actual program, so, and I did just actually sign one today, coincidentally.
Aye. This is Tony Catalano.
Alderman Catalano, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, you gotta remember, these are seniors that, um, you know, on fixed income, and, um, you know, it's gonna be costly for them to change over, so, I mean, uh, that's, that's my opinion, that's the reason why, maybe they're not coming forward to, uh, change over, uh, to the city water. Go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, Alderman Woods, this is Alderman Jacob, can I be recognized?
Sure, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Okay, the, this resident that actually came in and came to City Council, she actually talked to myself, Alderman Messina, and Alderman Catalano. Um, you know, she is, she is a senior citizen, she's lived in her home for like thirty-five, forty years, it's one of the original homes. I, I, I don't think she'd be able to, at this time, afford to connect to the city water, and her, her biggest thing was, uh, you know, the neighbor across the street has four, four residents living there, and she's, you know, one senior citizen, and her, this nineteen dollar increase for her was more than the four people across the street from her used, and, you know, she didn't really feel that was fair, and, you know, we, Alderman Catalano, myself, and Alderman Messina had asked Brad, you know, what we could do to help out. That's kinda how this started.
I'm not against it.
Can I say something?
Uh, Mayor Police, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, listen, so, the, the seniors that are on sewer only don't quali, they qualify for the garbage, but they don't qualify for the water because they're not hooked on, so that's why this is only for those that are sewer only, get, they get the same benefit that the other seniors get that do have the water, and let's face it, the annexation stuff and, uh, hookup stuff, we, we put that money aside so we can get rid of these problems eventually, and it's gonna take time, and so, and this is fair, I mean-
I agree.
So, no problem.
I agree with-
Yeah, yeah, so just, in, in, in closing, this is one of those cases where we create an ordinance and invariably, there's a part that falls through the crack and we don't notice what it is until we change something else, so this came to light, and, uh, as the Mayor said, this is just a fair and equitable thing, so, uh, for, for the seniors, and over time, everybody probably will, uh, join on, but, uh, for these people, not at this time, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Alderman Woods?
Oh, uh, Alderman Sizmarzki, you wanted to say something, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, it's for Brad's, Brad, can you repeat again, how, what's the number of, uh, sewer only? Was, did you say a hundred? I thought it was less than that when we talked last time.
Sure.
Mr. Wilson?
This is Brad, yes, thank you, um, yeah, I, last time I looked, it was around a hundred, um, I know it has been going down, uh, we've been having, somewhere between five and eight a year, uh, taking advantage of that tap-on program, so a few years ago, it was a hundred and twelve, that was three years ago, so, yeah, it could be in the mid-nineties at this point, I looked at a report, uh, a few months ago, so the, the number is going down, uh, which is good, um, but it's just, you know, like I said, five to, you know, five, about five to eight a year, so, so it'll take a little while, but it, it is getting there.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, so again, we have a, a motion, we have a second, uh, there's no further questions, okay, yeah, Alderman-
Alderman Woods, could I ask Brad a question, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, Brad, uh, what, for this particular resident that came in, so how much would she be saving? Cause she did call, uh, Randy and I, and still felt that, uh, we were gonna be charging her a lot of money, I, again, I don't, I didn't really understand what you and her had discussed, I wasn't there, so, how much would she be saving here?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, this is Brad, um, so, uh, soon we get past this presented, and we were to not charge them for twenty-five hundred gallons of sewer, uh, that would be a reduction of the monthly bill of twenty-four dollars and five cents, uh, which would put the sewer portion, uh, at forty-eight seventy-three, which is actually, uh, what, five dollars and five cents below what it was before the rate increase, um, so, yes, twenty-four dollars and five cents would be the, the reduction in the monthly bill on the sewer portion.
Oh, it'd be twenty-five, twenty-four dollars for her?
Uh, anyway, in that category, correct, yeah, twenty-four dollars and five cents would be where it would go down, correct?
Go down, Pete.
Yeah, recently, this digest version, her bill after the raise would be lower than it was before the raise.
Right.
Correct.
So-
Only in America.
So I think it's a good thing, I think she'll be happy, uh, again, we have a motion, we have a second, can we get a roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Okay.
That passes, uh, next, uh, twenty-twenty, I love this, this is my favorite subject matter, twenty-twenty vehicle sticker strategy. I'll start with making a motion to eliminate city stickers altogether, so we don't have to discuss them again, this is my third year in a row. Any questions?
Yeah, you know what?
Yes, second.
Yeah, no, I heard you.
I wa, I wanna be recognized, Tony Catalano?
Alderman Catalano.
So, so pretty much what you guys are doing, you're, um, so the people that are paid for all these years, now, now the people that haven't paid, you're gonna reward the people that are never paid into the system, and the people that have paid, you can eliminate it, it doesn't make sense. That money's going towards to fix our streets, fifteen dollars is not gonna kill people, uh, that's my opinion, so why are we awarding people that never paid into the system, because it's not working? I, I don't get that, I'm sorry.
Uh, I, can I make a comment?
Yeah, could, uh, yeah, first, Alderman Catalano, could you, I'm not sure I understand what, what, what the, what your argument is, could you, could you state that again for me?
Yeah, my, my argument is this, so you want to eliminate it because the system, the, 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 because, uh, the vehicle sticker's not working right, because what, we're not, um, we, we can't, um, um, for instance, it's on a loyalty system, right? So some people buy it, some people don't, so we can't enforce it, so what you're saying is let's eliminate it, well, what I'm saying-
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying eliminate it because we can't afford it, I, I'm saying eliminate it because we talk about it every year, and, and, and now we keep adding costs and, and debates over how much they should be and how we should lower them.
Can I make a comment?
Should we eliminate them? Sure, Mayor, Mayor Police, sure.
Yeah, it, it's very simple, so, you know, we've got this coronavirus thing going on right now, and that's why this is, that's why staff is even bringing it to us, otherwise they would've just sent them out and mailed them, the, you know, I, I asked the questions before, when they were, told me to put it on the agenda, how much money does it make? It makes a hundred and sixty thousand, we use it for striping and other road things and whatnot, and I believe some goes to the police department for crossing guards, and so if we eliminate it, we, we lose the hundred and sixty forever, and then we have to figure out how to make that up somewhere else, m, my suggestion was to very simply, when we mail out the, the things, instead of mailing them a bill, just put a nice letter in there saying, listen, here's your city sticker for next year, there's no charge because of the coronavirus, and, and go on from there and just leave it at that, just one mailer, a nice letter saying, listen, we understand everybody's going through a tough time, just send them the sticker, no charge this year because of the, what's happening, and, and then the staff will do the normal thing next year, they're not gonna bring it to us, they're just gonna send them out like normal, that's why it's up this year, uh, I, I think that's a nice little give back. If, if we wanna give it a, you know, listen, I don't care if we don't have city stickers, but then we're gonna have to have the discussion on where to get the hundred and sixty thousand for the striping and some of the other things that comes out of this budget, and we have to-
Alderman Sizmarzki has a question.
Alderman Sizmarzki, you have a question?
Mayor, what, uh, maybe Brad'll answer, what's, what's the cost of printing those stickers versus what you just said we spent? We get a hundred and sixty-four thousand, and what's the cost deduction out of that for printing those? And I, it's a two-part question, so you can answer it all away.
I, I think the printing, because I asked Brad, I think it's like fifteen hundred dollars and about a couple of grand in mailing the envelopes out. Brad, may, you can give the right number, I'm sure you have-
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, just to echo what the Mayor said, um, I'm gonna go backwards a little bit here, yeah, this really came forward tonight because with, you know, uh, like I said, the coronavirus stuff, staff didn't feel comfortable, uh, with the way the economy was and kinda, the, everything that's out there, the shelter place, um, you know, the, the severe, you know, what's looked like unemployment, there's been over seventeen million people filed for unemployment in the last three weeks, staff felt it was not the best decision to just, you know, literally go ahead and mail out these vehicle stickers, it, it felt kinda tone deaf to staff, uh, which is why we put together these couple of options, um, to, to go, so, it, it, it's nothing to do with the program not working, it's just, you know, um, just, we didn't feel comfortable doing it that way, um, you know, but then, the, the cost, you know, we probably, uh, to Alderman Sizmarzki's question, um, you know, the revenue's about one sixty, we probably spend between seasonal staff, printing, mailing, postage, this, that, and the other, um, probably about ten to fifteen thousand all in between printing, postage, seasonal staff, whatever, so, we're, we're somewhere, you know, north of a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, net on the program.
Alderman Messina would like to be recognized?
Well, I, I got a second half of that, I, I rebuttal to that. Um, you al, you also have to add in how much time we spend going and chasing people down and looking for this, and, you know, billing them out and, and going after, I mean, there are other ways to find money in the, for the city, I mean, you also could put, you could also bring in gr, uh, gas, uh, grasp tags for bags and get rid of the vehicle student, have bags purchased for, for bags, that's, uh, I mean, other towns do that, where you buy them at five, six, a dozen from the, or five at a time from Jewel, Jewel helps out, they did it in Des Plaines where I, where I lived at one time, we had to buy six at a time, you put a tag, if the tag's not in the bag or the garbage can, a lot of people can put it on the garbage can and they just take it, but, uh, I mean, there's another, there's other ways But, uh, I mean, there's another, there's other ways to get revenue. And that's five dollars, you know, this, this, they don't go through the city. We get someone to print up the tags. They go purchase them, I mean, from the city or from the, from the, from, uh, Jewel or To- uh, Pete's, uh, Tony's, uh, market or Frank's Market. While they're shopping, they pick up their tags. So, I mean, you could also go about that. The tags, you're just chasing those around. I mean, this way, if you don't have a tag on the bag of grass, it doesn't get picked up. It's clear and simple. That's just a tag.
All right, can I make a comment to that?
Alderman Messina has two points. Well, yeah, Alderman, Alderman Messina was next. Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I just wanted to read. Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor. I can, I can go after you then if it's a point regarding-
I was just going to tell you, Alderman Sismarski's comments of the bags. So, I work with some people, you know, when I, when I am in the office, basically, some of them, we talk about landscaping and stuff. Oh, yeah, they want me to buy stickers and this and that. I just dump it in the regular garbage. I bury it in a black bag and bury it in the garbage. So, I'm not buying the stickers. I'm not doing, and it's, and other people like, oh, no, no. I just forget. I, I don't, I, I don't use that. I'm not going to pay for it. There's a lot of complaining and whatnot when it comes to adding those stickers. We simply have, right, right now, we have this in place, right? So, if we simply just print the sticker, or, or you can just send a simple letter and say, hey, we're not sending out any stickers this year and keep the stickers you have. Those are going to be good for another year. My intent was, you know, when I talked to Brad, I go, just send them the sticker like normal so everything goes normal. We eat the fifteen hundred dollars for the stickers. The mailer's going out anyway. Send a nice little letter saying, listen, we understand what's going on, no charge, here's, your sticker's enclosed. And that's it. And then next year, this is not going to come up because I hope this is the only pandemic in our lifetime that we're going to see. And the staff is just going to go as business as usual. And we don't have to worry about trying to make up money and add stickers and all this other stuff. I, I, you know.
Well, thank you. Alderman Messina? So, I'm, I'm, I'm going to echo with the mayor, uh, had, had said a couple, but one point that nobody's talked about. But let's, number one, the mailer's going out no matter what. We, if we're going to do it, we should do it because, and we can include it there. Secondly, with the bags, while that's a good idea, I know that in my parents' town, they have to do it. And it's a nightmare. It's actually more work than the once-a-year city sticker, than trying to manage who's, to the mayor's point, who's using and who's not. I mean, if you have a landscaper, well, okay, well, you don't pay for them, but I do. It, it's a kind of a nightmare, but a good idea. Um, but most important, I think the chief has mentioned this before, the city sticker is a safety thing. There are times when they pull up and they see that sticker in the window and it's, it's an indicator. I know if I was an officer, I'd feel a little safer knowing that, okay, that's one of my residents. Or if I'm going to approach a vehicle, um, at whatever time of the night, uh, you know, and I know it's a resident, I'm going to feel a little bit more at ease, in my opinion. Um, so, just the safety issue of, of, of the, uh, stickers themselves is something that we should consider as well, uh, as we consider sending them out again, as the mayor said, but just not-
Even the kids can test. We had the most kids that entered this year.
Yeah, just Alderman Woods, this is Alderman Jacob?
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with, uh, the mayor and, and Alderman Messina as well. I, I think we should just go ahead, do the number two, charge them zero. I mean, we, we just had kids put, send all these drawings in now. Um, again, to Alderman Messina's point, this is, does add a little, uh, you know, when the police officers do pull somebody over, they know it's a resident and it, we, we wouldn't even be talking about the, the, this if it wasn't, uh, for the Corona. I mean, we did, this, I mean, this wouldn't even be discussed this year.
Oh, yeah, it was on every year. Uh, Alderman Sismarski?
Alderman Sismarski, go ahead.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not opposed to Mr. Messina's proposal, but, um, you know, a, as far as the policing, when's the last time a police officer approached the car from the passenger side and looked in the lower right corner where the sticker? We need to maybe either change the placement of it so they do know. Because none of them, none of them come to your front of your windshield, look to see if you're-
I was, um, I, I was, yeah, I was, I was talking about my-
Rear, rear, rear left.
Alderman Messina, go ahead, sorry. Yeah, I was, I was just talking about, I didn't, I don't know how Alderman Jacob understood it, but I, I was meaning in motion when they're in a parking lot or when they're doing a parking infraction, like overnight parking.
Right.
Uh, I, I meant more, more, more of those, not in motion violations, but it's more at, at arrest. Sorry.
Can I, can I be recognized?
Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I agree that there's a motion on the floor right now to eliminate them totally. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, so, if you guys agree, uh, change the motion, I agree, we should just give them to the people. I think it's a good thing to start off with trying to help these people out in our town. They're going to get the vehicle stickers, but we aren't charging them. So, I would go with that motion, is go with number two and don't charge them, just mail out the stickers.
It's not one of the options, Gene. I, I made something different of, that isn't even on, one of the options.
So, then let's vote, let's vote on it and, and-
Let's, let's, let's do this. There's a motion on the floor to eliminate them. And, and I agree that it's a good idea and people are going to be happy that we eliminated it this year. It's a nice gesture and I think that they'll be happy every year after if we eliminate it altogether. So, it'd be a doubly, triply, quadruply nice gesture. So, uh, with the motion on the floor, let's take a roll call and if it fails, we'll do something else. So, let's, uh, can we call the roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
This is to eliminate the sticker.
What's your, hold on, hold on, what's your, is it amended motion or the same motion?
It's the same motion to eliminate the sticker altogether.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
That fails. So, does somebody else have a, a motion they would like to recommend? Alderman Messina? Yeah, Alderman Messina would like to be recognized? Sure, go ahead, Alderman Messina. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to waive the fee for the city stickers for this year. Um, and, um, that's my motion.
And, uh, can I, can I, um, inter- can I, um, be recognized, Tony Catalano?
Was there a second?
Alderman Catalano, go ahead.
Uh, yeah. With that motion is to send out a letter and just use the same vehicle stickers from last year so we can save on the printing cost of the vehicle stickers.
What happened to the poor kid that drew the sticker?
No, we, we had the kids that just drew up the new ones.
Right. Yeah.
Wait, do it next, yeah.
I, I think-
Alderman Messina would like to be recognized? Alder- Alderman Messina, go ahead. Um, as, as the motioner, um, I, I, I'm open to that recommendation, um, if, if we want to bring it up for debate. Um, I, I think that's something I had thought about. I think it's kind of a good idea. We're reprinting just to reprint. We, you know, maybe we would just award the, the kid and make it twenty-twenty-two's or twenty-twenty-one sticker or whatever. Um, and we just don't, just say, keep your sticker on from this year. Um, the, maybe that's an option to say let's an extra, kind of what-
Can I say something?
Uh, well, look, I, I'll, I'll make a comment.
Then you backlog it every year after.
First, what happens is the, the kid that, uh, won the contest doesn't get to do the sticker, which I guess you could push back. Two, you got people driving around with it expired stickers. Three, the, the thing that it changes is habit. So, people, even if they're getting it free, will be getting a sticker. So, we're going to keep the process going. So, I think mentally, it's more important to, even if we're giving them free, to send out a new sticker so that they understand it's still a yearly thing. Whereas if we just eliminate it altogether with a letter, some people are gonna, going into the year afterwards, be confused and go, well, I thought you eliminated it altogether. So, I, I, I would not be in favor of using the same sticker for those reasons. I'd be okay if we're going to give it free and, and, and send it out. Uh, I, I get that. I, I would prefer to eliminate it altogether, but, uh, go ahead. Alderman Messina was hoping to get recognized? Go ahead, Alderman Messina. Uh, I, yeah, I, I think it's a fair, a fair point to, again, hopefully up for debate. Um, I think it's a good point. I think it, I, I'm willing to amend my motion to at least obviously be obvious, including it with the mailer.
Right.
Brought up some valid, yeah. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Mayor Police, go ahead.
Yeah, very simple. It, we make the new sticker, we mail them, no matter what, we're sending out a letter, right?
Hello?
We, we just add the new-
Why don't you get cut off?
The new sticker is going to cost us about fifteen hundred dollars, I think it is, to print. So, the mailer is still going out regardless. So, they're going to get one mailer and we're done. So, the, the- I agree.
You get cut off. I don't know. Jeff, can you tell Jeff this, this thing's cutting me off every twice now.
Yeah, I will amend my second.
Do you have a question?
I think there's a technical problem going on, so I would, I would wrap up the meeting quickly.
Yeah, it's the second time before you cut off again. I hear you. I just wanted, I, I missed you both times. I wanted to, I got cut off, I don't know, it just keeps dropping. I have no idea. But, uh, can you repeat the, did you guys say to amend it, keep the kids, I want to keep the kids drawing? You're going to backlog it every year after.
No, the motion is to send out a new sticker.
Right, the motion will be that we're sending out a mailer and a new sticker. And the sticker-
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Alderman Messina, a second by Alderman Jacob. Let's do a roll call then.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Okay, that, that passes. Uh, next items to be considered at future meetings, uh, we have none. Is there anything anybody would like to see on the future agenda? Issues, there being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Happy Easter, everyone.
Yeah, happy Easter, everybody.
Yeah, stay well, boys.